Oh, that's a big one. Oh, that's your line?
No.
Okay, so I have seven o'clock, I like to call this regular board selection. We're meeting to order Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, 7:00 PM. The first thing we'll talk about is a high-grade public meeting. 10:00 in person, thanks for being here, or electronically. And if you have something to say during an audience of citizens, raise your hand, or raise your hand on Zoom there. We're trying to call on you, and we'll go from there. If anybody's disrespectful, we'll ask you to leave. And if you don't, well, I'm sure we'll persuade you. I'm there. I gotta be honest, but it's been a busy week. Uh, next, we will all join in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands on its own ground in this world. Who wrote the agenda? I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Anybody any concerns, additions? Um, I have some comments there in the board's comments, but we'll talk, you know, talk a little bit, but certainly nothing to go around here. All those favor the agenda, I propose. Uh, next, I move to approve the board's select and regular meeting minutes for July 11th, 2023. As you had.
Yeah, just the editorial, paragraph 6.1, first sentence. Says Chris Bynum said that the H-TAC building committee presented to the Board of Education the recommendation of the BOE voted in favor. I think maybe you could just remove some words and just say, presented to the Board of Education the recommendation and the BOE voted in favor.
Okay, can understand that. Presented to the Board of Education and the BOE voted in favor of.
Yep.
Okay. I'm okay with that, everybody kind of understanding now, okay?
A little more, please, clear.
Excuse me?
A little clearer.
Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
I'm.
Close, thank you. Okay, audience of citizens. Uh, young lady in the back there, did you have, did you just visit tonight, or did you want to talk about anything?
I don't have a camera on during this.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody on raising their hand on one more?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Okay, uh, next is old business. So the contract with Silver, Petrocelli, and Associates for complete design work to replace an existing indoor air quality system at Forest Governor W Porter School. So we just went to the board event, we just talked about that, and we just got them moved on it last week. So I moved off, I was marked, you know, actually outside, right? I need to do that.
I thought you weren't adding anything.
Okay, hold on.
Doing me that, you can't make the Thursday meeting.
Okay, so that's the problem. All right.
Sure. We're good, I'm signing the contract tomorrow. So Silver, that's coming out to meet with, keep, keep people up Thursday and sign the contract.
And that's why I.
Right, I included it in, it absolutely includes the appendix, we've got all the fishing interests committee has since, which documents exactly how they'll proceed through the contract, and everything will get more than that. So. As far as the pricing, 5.3, um, is the decision to not move forward with the acoustic? No, those acoustic, those are listed as add-ons in the appendix. Oh, yes. So. The acoustical consultant would be in addition to $10,000.
All right.
So, so what they're signing for would be in addition to what's listed by.
Okay.
Because it would have been huge effort to put all that, all those answers into the original contract. So I added it as a timeline that we would. Okay. And, and as far as the. If the scope were to be reduced, that would just be handled at that right time.
Okay.
Just reduce or increase, so it's maybe like here, if you went to, if you really broke it down into small components, you know, you reached somebody. Means everything, okay? So let's call that, meaning if we break it into a five-year project, it might change the scope. We'd have to negotiate.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have to cross-reference one that we did something, and the other one is what you kind of have there. So, okay, so, uh, we're going right to appointments and resignations. Yes, yes, correct.
Yes.
Excellent. So, um, the Republican. Town committee had a vacancy on the Board of Education, and Paul Zator has stepped up and asked to, and got the approval and the, um, support from the Republican town committee. So they have nominated him to fill the position of Governor Palatana. So I move to approve the appointment of Paul Zator to the Board of Education. Uh, tell them why. No.
A lot of punishment, right?
No.
Um, well, I, I think I've got some value to the board. I've got extensive experience over, well. Almost all my life, you're 40, almost 49 years of men, of people management, kid management, uh, business management. Been in town for 30, going on 30 years, I have five kids of our own. Raised another 90 throughout the daycare, and. I've got that old experience to add.
And still you're here, good for you, God bless you.
I'm still, I'm still breathing.
So, yeah, okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Um, any questions for? Get them, get them approved before you. All those in favor, all those in favor of the Board of Education. Close?
You promised him he'd say it on open face?
Yes.
Okay.
Good town administration.
Uh, just a reminder, we can see the flyer under my tab for the Trust for Public Land fundraiser to really get a kickoff for working the trail system, including Monahawad State Park. And that's August 17th, 4:00 to 7:00. For mere $60 a ticket, you get to have some wine, music, and a cater buffet. Plus, they would love you to donate more. That just covers the call. And music, and that, right, music. And then, uh, I just got a state legislative update today, I can't make heads or tails of it. Um, I'll wait for CCM costs to inform me on what all these different, um. Public acts mean exactly toward town, but I shot you a copy of every section that was modified uh, by the General Assembly that affects assessment, taxation, land use, and municipal.
Right. Any major damage?
I don't know. I'm nervous.
Early voting will cost you.
It will cost you. They'll, they'll cover it for the first year.
What's that?
They'll cover it for the first year.
One, oh, one.
Early voting, it's going to require us to have personnel sitting here for two weeks. Um, so that's on the type of voting.
Or not just put it in box this, like, and we're done?
No, you have to have the machines out, they have to be able to vote, you have to lock them up in the clerk's office. It's, it's not going to be easy.
Same for primaries too, or is it just?
There's different rules for primaries and different rules for the type of voting you're doing. So how many days extra will be open? Uh, well, for a small town like us, the absentee ballot is required. So it's, it's facing a problem, but in bigger cities, but in part of smaller towns that don't have the luxury of dedicating a space for two weeks, like, you know, it's all used for the.
So Bill, one of your questions, I looked at this quickly, and a lot of, a lot of big cities stuff in here. But for us, uh, we're not a distressed municipality, so that grant program is out. But underneath that, Section 52, 35 million for small-town economic development, our Economic Assistance Program, each fiscal year. So, you know what, if there's businesses out there, we can get through that, get them some help. That's really where we would end up, not a distressed community, we take good care of our own. For the most part, there's some changes, no one, I didn't talk about that there in the comments, but the thing of it is, if we could get help with economic development, between the six floor over there, it's pretty good. So we'll see what happens, we'll see how these all shake up.
The only thing with the, um. Only because.
Well, they're, they're trying to protect group homes. There's a bill in here that the municipality chief executive officer annually will submit the opposite policy and management, sworn statement confirming that no registered family childcare homes or group childcare homes located in residence or licensed by the Office of Rural Childhood are treated in a manner any different from a single or multifamily dwelling in the municipality's zoning ordinances. They're trying to make sure we're not treating them differently.
There's also, there's also requires the OPM to establish methodology meeting certain requirements for each municipality's fair share allocation, assessing the affordable housing needs.
Yes.
That's the one.
And that's the one, and they don't understand sector and.
Well.
They just don't get it.
So we can do that all. Okay, and I can happily report that the, um, intergenerational health and wellness day fair that was held this week was a great success. We had seniors and, and all page rangers doing yoga, disco, pickleball. Um, we had the Health District here, we had, um, Division of the State that was helping with Medicare and Medicaid questions, um, I forget their acronym, and we had. What else? Oh, oh, I'm blanking out, but this one here, yeah, it's already on the fly. And then we also had a Eagle Scout that made a lion's deposit your eyeglass containing the same sharing. And his name is Ryan Ambusani. And we have August 16th, art of safe driving courses beginning and nutrition and cooking classes weekly in July sponsored by Yukon, and a senior farmer's market coupons are available by electric card. I'm not sure what that is. The receiver cards are within a week, so they have to sign up. And I happily report that in our security training, 32 employees received tests. Secret test, they didn't know it was a test, 32 passed. No failings.
What's that a test?
They tried to trick us, that this email is hoping will click on and open this executable file. Um, one came through and the employees, this was actually a real phishing. They pretended to be me, and we wanted, what do you want me to do?
To fire. And to click on something because they had something to talk, what is Steve?
Right, so Steve has sent me privately emailed me, said, I'm sure this is fake, I'm just making sure you didn't ask me to click on something because it was very confidential discussion I wanted to have. I said, no, it's not real. Uh, I said, I will report it to Knowless, and, um. But that's it, they're getting really good at it, and AI is going to make it better than that. Because next you'll hear my voice, will be actually my voice.
I need this three seconds.
Right, me, and I was in meetings. For, um. And I think there's one that's hilarious to tell if you're in that. There, these scams are good.
Actually, they have instances where it's calling and saying, you know, they need money, and they have like a grandkid's voice.
Right.
And, I mean, and it's their voice that they think, and so even, so they're recommending you have like a secret code in families, so that people can't do that to them.
If I were to call something else, I couldn't believe it.
Hang up and call the person.
One, one, and try. Hold on, and ask what the dogs, it was supposed to be a grandson, she said to a grandson, I don't know, this AI con, what was the name of your dog when you were five?
And I said, I got that, I said, my grandson's three years old. So they got $2,000.
Yes.
And they hung up.
Of what?
Of mine, no, years ago.
Oh, well, now they want to.
Okay.
Inflation.
Right. You all sent them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, transfers, right? No, uh, state police monthly report, and I thank you comrades and zingers for the dedication of the annual report. Uh, transfer, it's the end of the year, we're cleaning up the. The fiscal year, and we're moving things around, uh. No real surprises, we talked to the dev. We have to mind one area, we're moving to another to kind of bring things up. I have to turn the budget and move forward this year, and handle some of these things. Yes, we hope so, but there's always things that happen throughout the year that we need to move money around. So.
A lot of our, one line, where equipment doesn't have any money in it, but we have plenty in supply, so it doesn't ship out.
Oh. Okay, so I make a motion to. Once, you know, take a minute to look at it, because I've looked at it, but I don't want to just ask you to blind it, so. There's a list of them there, there's one that's a drive.
Most of them look like they were in budget.
Right, just out of whack.
Right.
There's only one that had collective.
I think there are two that continue that.
Right.
Yeah, the Lake Management Salary and the Record Department.
Yeah, what?
Salary.
I do have, the recovery cost of the record department salary, it's $6,000. You know what that exactly is? Who did?
I think it had to do with. The amount of time we had of training, and definitely after training. They hit the early part of the budget, because the management's divided, it's seasons between two budgets. We'll get to that.
So I make a motion, and you can ask questions if you have, and I make a motion that we approve the transfers uh, presented on its base, totaling $29,225. Any questions? I think the only thing that I would ask is that we, we watch salary of those that I bring and stuff. We're getting too much, um. Too much need to bring in extra people to get the job done. We need to budget those extra people in the upcoming year, so in January, I got one, right?
Did we end up with one more week? On the year, one more payday? That may have been it.
I, I think there was, but I, I know this one that we hit was the salaries and retail and the gate monitoring. Correct. For the last payroll, they had to up it, to be able to cover the last payroll, and it was $1,000. Okay, but we're low back. It's salary Recreation Department, significantly $300. Well, I mean, we, we're paying from Mark to them a little bit. There was an increase in the assistant director, while she covered, was, that's very, covered her, and then she didn't go back as far back as she was, and then that made us all a bucket.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
I am.
Close. No refunds, improvement of bills. Uh, move to approve payment bills totaling $71,636.06. Insisting on 23, 24 emergency, 22, 23 regular. 23, 24 regular credit card paychecks, we're already hitting 23, 24. What's that, emergency point?
That just meant we couldn't wait to, um, for the cycle, we had to issue a check, it was probably the ban, or. I know, and they like, they like to pay the ban at the end of the concert, so.
Oh, you know what, I only, I make them on time.
Right.
Well, that's one reason why. We find some money.
What's the, um.
But it'll go back.
The dispatch membership from Polla, is that the fire department?
No, that's not. It's a quarterly.
The last freeze.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I have a giant black birch, always, uh, one season, just sitting there, they're all my. So was that another thing that's in this, Black Birch?
No, we can't solve tonight, all those in favor, paying bills. Close, thank you.
Thanks.
Audience of citizens, sorry, it's been a long week, audience of citizens. And we're going to talk about it. And, and you said, are we still good? Everybody good? Excellent. Board member comments? All right.
Waitress over.
We live in a wonderful community, but lately it's the you that have. Tested our. You know, being able to get along and stuff, and doing what's right for the people around you. So, uh, we've had some discussions with Lake Management, every Sunday night for four hours. Um, text messages going back and forth and stuff, over the, over how the weekend went, and what's on the lake and stuff. Um. We've had discussions with the Marine Patrol on how they've been treated and disrespected and doing their job out there, and their job is not to upset people, their job is more of public relations, have a good time, and for safety. So if you're stopped, they have a question. Or there's a, a suggestion about safety of the activity on the water, and for them to catch grief on it. There's no need, there's really no need, and lastly, we're getting complaints of excessive noise. People taking it into their own hands for, um. Cannon shots, I'll put it like that, cannon shot light noisemakers to scare the geese off of their property. But it disrupts the people around them. The geese are a problem, I, I understand it, you know, we've tried. Um. So. There's going to be some meetings, I'm changing some ordinances, not to be the bad guys. But we have to do things because. Individuals more than a few are taking it upon themselves to circumvent what we believe are, are good and kind and safe. Practices. And what we've heard is, well, it's not a law, it's not an ordinance, I don't have to do that. It's unfortunate, but we may have to look at some of these and really change the ordinance. Or is it a civil matter between holders?
Well, the cannon shots are every five minutes.
They.
Every five minutes. Excuse me? All right, we had audience of citizens.
It's a timer, it's a timer, I wasn't recording.
So every five minutes? For just to get rid of geese?
Yes, but it, it echoes on the higher layers. And I'm getting calls from neighborhoods around Columbia.
Everybody thought they were blasting rock.
It was dynamite, so.
Uh, that's one issue, the other issue is when, when people are asked to pull over and show registration because there's no record of registration of water craft, and they get belligerent, and they use foul language, and they tell the, you know, Marine Patrol, you have no authority here, and they do have authority. There's issues, if we're going to have people out there, positions of authority to do what is right and make things safe for everybody, we have to back them up. I, I. Before we put anything into action, we will discuss it, we'll take a look at it, we'll have to vote on it. But it's, it's. It's, um. It's unfortunate. And, uh, yeah. The, the one big thing that has happened, and to be honest with you, there's some. Whoever is reporting things on the lake, that may be a personal dislike, and no problems may have occurred. They may not like the decision we make. But this is, this, this is the town's lake, the town people's lake. It's not the lake of those who live on the lake. It's the town's lake, so, um. Uh, it's not one way or another, we have to look at some of these things because they are a little, there's some vague, but the, the safety ones are the biggest issue. And, uh, I think the noise, the cannon, the minor cannon, or the cannon-like type of thing is probably. So.
Irritating.
Oh.
And that would make me agree. Can we do a noise ordinance?
I'm, I'm hesitant to do that. You have to take care of what it is, it's because of the fact that you seek to solve an immediate problem at a, at a certain point in time, but, but if you're worded the wrong way, there's unforeseen consequences down the road, and that's the danger, but.
It becomes a weapon.
Ordinances, yes.
For neighbors battling neighbors, and then we have to enforce.
You know, and I, I often think about the, uh, you know, the, the police get involved in certain things, and often they'll say to people, it's like, look, there's nothing we can do, it's a civil matter between, you know, it's a nuisance, somebody's creating a nuisance on their property, and interfering, you're using enjoyment of the property, maybe that's something, a remedy that, that should be considered by people who are, are faced with those problems.
Hey, I, I've got a whole bunch of different towns that we've looked at and to have, open up discussion, and maybe it just gives some more teeth to the resident people to have a discussion with, the neighbor that, what they're doing is excessive.
You know. So, again. We'll take a look at them, and some of them are kind of like, really, can you kind of, on a Sunday night, 10:00 PM on the water, having a party out there, I mean, hey, I think we kind of passed them. So little things like that, thank your neighbor, or thank the people, so. That's, that's it. Um. Anybody other comments? We have no. We have no executive session, so it is, uh, seven twenty-nine, so at this time, I make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-nine P M. All those in favor?
I think Judy's.
Thank you. When we get it started, yeah.
Appreciate it, folks.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Don't thank you.
What that means is just as quick, don't worry about it, sure.
So. Is that something anybody? I, that was an interesting. I've been, I've turned it.